McCann, please, please take it away.
Okay, thank you. Greetings. Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Did you get it? Too late.
I agree. He hesitates.
Let the record show that tonight we have Commissioners McAvoy, Mettler, Speck, and Winter joining us. Let the record show that Commissioner Holmes is excused in absence from the meeting. So we will start with Commission Communications. Commissioners, are there any communications this evening? I don't see any. So we will move on to Staff Communications. Staff?
Good evening. I'm Anas Latinsky, Planning Division Manager here at the City of Beaverton. I have the great pleasure of introducing two newly appointed, freshly minted Planning Commissioners here tonight. We have Andy McAvoy and Jensen Mettler, who were formally appointed by the City Council just yesterday. So please, everyone, give them their welcome. I would also like to remind folks that there is a Boards and Commissions Appreciation Event next Wednesday, which is June 4th, at the Reaser. You should have all received invitations to attend. If you can attend, which I think you should, it will be fun, please remember to RSVP. And if you have not received one, send me an email and I'll make sure I'll make sure to get a proper invitation out to you. I would be happy to give our new Commissioners a moment to introduce themselves if they would like to, just briefly, before we continue with the agenda for the meeting. Is that something that you two are prepared to do? All right, let's go with Commissioner Mettler first, since we saw an enthusiastic head nod there.
Thank you, Anna. My name is Jensen Mettler. I live in the Beaverton area. I work at Nike as an analytics leader and really excited to join the Commission and contribute to the community.
Thank you. And Commissioner McAvoy?
Yeah. Hey, everyone. Great to meet you, Andy McAvoy. Similarly, just excited to be here, happy to be on the Commission. It's a pleasure and an honor to meet you all and work with you. I live in the South Beaverton Neighborhood. Been in the Beaverton area for about eight years. I work at Oregon State University as a wildfire risk analyst. So I spend my days looking at maps, and this was a sort of a natural bridge to support our community, leverage that skill set. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. We have, overall, a pretty new commission. Obviously, we have our new folks, but we have also a number of people who have not been on the commission for more than a year. So tonight, one of the agenda items is training, kind of a background information presentation that I'll be providing on Oregon Land Use Law and some recent legislation. But we'll be continuing to really work to include kind of ongoing orientation material with the regular Planning Commission meetings, as well as scheduling some more specific trainings, either during meetings or outside of meeting contacts, to make sure that we're keeping people informed. So during this meeting, we have two new folks, so I want our new Commissioners to feel free to ask questions of staff, of our Assistant City Attorney, Robin McIntyre, and no better way to learn than by doing. So that's what we'll be doing tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, and welcome to our new Commissioners. So we'll move on to New Business. The first item on the agenda is the application for LU3 2024-01167, Loon Drive ASR3 Wireless Facility, case file number WCF3 2024-01162. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in the hearing are Development Code Section 40.96.15.3(c), Wireless Facility 3. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward these approval criteria or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code that the speaker believes apply to the application. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the Planning Commission and other interested parties an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony has standing to appeal the decision. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue may preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. State and local law require Commissioners to make certain disclosures. To these ends, the following questions will be asked. Does any Commissioner have a potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare? We will start with Commissioner Winter.
No to all three.
All right. Commissioner Speck?
None for me.
Okay. Commissioner Mettler?
No to all.
All right. And Commissioner McAvoy?
No to all.
And it is a no to all three for me as well. Does any member of the audience wish to question a Commissioner about ex parte contacts or site visits, or challenge the right of any Commissioner to participate in this hearing? And we've seen, let the record show, no response. The order of the public hearing tonight will be as follows. City staff will give a presentation, followed by Commissioners' questions of staff. The applicant will be given 20 minutes for its presentation, followed by the Commission's questions of the applicant. Then, members of the public in support of the application can speak for up to five minutes each. Then, members of the public opposed to the application can speak for up to five minutes each. And then, members of the public who are neither in support nor opposed will then have five minutes to speak. After public testimony, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then hear any final comments from staff. So we will now begin with the staff presentation. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, hopefully you are able to see the presentation now. Good evening, Acting Chair McCann. And Commissioners, my name is Lauren Russell. I'm an Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The proposal before you tonight is the Loon Drive ASR3 Wireless Facility. Please note that you should have received a supplemental memo from staff yesterday, which was May 27th, that modifies the language of one of the recommended conditions of approval to better match the code requirement. All right, so these maps show the site, and the site is outlined in red on each of the maps. The subject site is located at 16500 Southwest Loon Drive. It's approximately 2.3 acres in size. It's currently developed with an aquifer storage and recover, abbreviation ASR, well, with related equipment located both at grade outside and within a one-story accessory building. There is a small paved parking area, and the site is enclosed by a security fence and gates. The subject site is zoned Residential Mixed B, RMB. It is surrounded by the RMB zone to the north and west, the Neighborhood Service, or NS, zone to the south, and the RMB NF and Residential Mixed A zones to the east. There is an educational institution used to the north, single detached dwellings to the west, eating and drinking establishments, personal service, and retail uses to the south, and single detached dwellings, townhouses, and retail uses to the east. The applicant, which is the City of Beaverton Public Works Department, is requesting a Wireless Facility 3 approval for the construction of a new wireless communications facility tower consisting of a 65-foot tall wooden pole topped with an antenna for a total height of 70 feet to facilitate the collection of water meter data. No ground equipment is proposed with this project. This is the proposed site plan. Almost everything that's labeled on this site is existing. The main thing to look for is there's a purple circle, little dot in the center, and then it has three lines coming off it to illustrate the setbacks. So this is the Loon Drive ASR3 Facility. You could see that at the top of this image, there is the main, the equipment building, the parking area, the driveway that connects to Loon Drive. As you go towards the bottom of this map, there are other aspects of it, including the lower and upper ponds, filtration systems, and then, right in the center, is where they are proposing the new tower. The code requires that towers meet a minimum setback of the height of a tower plus five feet. So for this proposal, that would mean that it has to be at least 75 feet from each property line. As you can see here, the closest property line to the proposed location of the tower is about 130 feet away. So they are providing much more of a setback than is required. Maintenance vehicles, if they're needed to access this facility, would use the existing paved parking area. No new pavement or even much grading is proposed on the site. These are photo simulations that are taken from the applicant's visual impact report, and they demonstrate that the design of the proposed tower and its location interior to the site with many mature trees limits the visual impact of the tower. It's actually a little difficult to see in some of these images. It's not what we typically think of when you hear about a wireless facility. So it fits into the site pretty well. Staff is recommending approval of the Loon Drive ASR3 Wireless Facility, subject to conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you have about the project. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Lauren. Commission members, are there any questions of staff with regard to the proposed application? It does not appear so. And I will pause for just a moment to let the record show that Chair Adams has arrived, although I think tonight he is Commissioner Adams, unless we need to switch. Robin?
No, that's fine, but I would just like to state for the record, can you run through the ex parte site visits and conflicts of interest question with Commissioner Adams, please?
I will. Hello, Commissioner Adams. So let me ask you, do you have any potential or actual conflict of interest, ex parte contacts, or site visits to declare?
Chair McCann, I do not.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so now that we have finished the staff presentation, it is now time for the applicant's presentation. The applicant will now have 20 minutes to present. Please begin by introducing yourselves and stating your names and addresses for the record.
Hello, Commissioner McCann and other Commissioners. Actually, I can't turn on my video because the host has stopped it. Just, I had turned it on earlier, so I need her to turn that back on.
Is someone working on that? City? Staff?
Yes, just one moment. Our apologies.
Okay, no worries.
Brad, if you'd like to, you can go ahead and share your story and get your presentation going while we're working on the camera.
Sure. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good evening. My name is Brad Kilgian. I am a senior planner with Harper-Hop Peterson-Mergellis. We're a local consulting, engineering consulting firm, and I am representing the City of Beaverton's Public Works Department in obtaining the entitlements for the antenna. I won't belabor you with everything that Lauren just went through. I just wanted to point out a few things. This shows the location. It's a stormwater management facility and aquifer storage and recovery facility. And this is a proposal to construct a new 65-foot-high wireless antenna to collect information from water meters within the city. So the city is going through a process to begin a wireless metering program, and I'll speak about that here shortly. Now, this is the civil engineered site plan that shows the location of the tower. It's going to be at the very end of this road. It is a utility pole, not unsimilar to what you would see around the rest of the city on the streets where there are wood utility poles. It is simply a wood utility pole, but it's 65-foot taller, or 65-foot tall, not 65-foot taller. Little delay here. There we go. Just, there's two different types of wireless facilities. We want to make sure that you know that this is not the facility type that we're looking at. This is not proposed. This is what we're proposing, and it's a wood pole. It's used to remotely collect data, so the meter readers don't necessarily have to visit everyone. The water meters now transmit the information to the city in real time, and it reduces the need to manually collect it, which saves money for the city from that perspective. And it also helps to detect unusually high water use or leaks that can help customers identify issues to avoid excessive uses and charges. So the city is actually able to look at real-time use of water and identify any, you know, like, hey, there's a lot of water being used here, and it doesn't make sense. This is a single-family residence. So then they can go out and look at it and talk with the owner to make sure that everything is up to speed and up to par. As Lauren mentioned, the property is zoned Residential Mixed B. It would be, the antenna would be mounted onto a utility pole. There are three antennas within the city to serve the City of Beaverton. Two other sites were able to be co-located onto existing infrastructure to meet the needs for the south part of Beaverton. This was the location that the city ended up selecting after looking at a couple of different alternatives. It's located so that all the underlying dimensional standards are met or exceeded. It's interior to the site, and as you can see, I'll go through those same pictures that Lauren did. We put it in a location, and it's pretty much blends in with the environment because of the tall trees that are around the site. And wireless facilities are also allowed in all surrounding zones, so this is not specific to this location. This is what the antenna looks like. It's like a goalpost. It's three foot by three foot, and there's no ground-mounted equipment associated with this. So the utility pole is stuck in the ground, and this antenna is put at the top to collect the information with the router on the side of the pole. As Lauren mentioned, I just want to take a few minutes to go through these a little bit more. So this is, if you were on Loon Drive, the aerial view in the top left corner is as if you were driving down Loon Drive. From, I guess, more of an oblique perspective, it shows you where it would be on the site. So it's kind of located interior to the site and away from any nearby residential, so it's kind of put into those locations where there's already existing vegetation and trees. Then, coming down, moving to the right, and staying on the upper right-hand corner, you're on Loon Drive now, looking up and over, and you'll see that utility pole, and you'll see the antenna on the top mounted there. And you'll see the antenna on the top mounted there. Uh, down below is, there are some houses located north and west of the um, ASR site. And so this would be the perspective from, I guess, the closest house to that uh, on the street uh, in the lower left-hand side. And then out on Schultz Ferry, if you were driving past this site, you probably wouldn't see this antenna or know what it was. It'd look like a utility pole. Um, it's pretty much uh, screened from there. Uh, this is the closest tower and it's down on Schultz Ferry Road on the opposite side. It's located in Tigerd. Um, that, that, this is kind of one of the locations they were looking at. There were uh, other locations that they looked at. This is one of the locations they were looking at to meet the needs of this area for that. And uh, there were a couple of reasons that they didn't select this site. One was, uh, and I'll get into it here shortly, was because the existing site is on city property. It's already gated. It's security, it's, it's very secured. Um, so they're not concerned about people getting into it and, and uh, doing anything to the antenna. Uh, this is a critical facility for homeland security, so all of this funding to do the water metering is um, provided by the uh, EPA. Um, it's uh, investing in projects to enhance reliability and resilience of water infrastructure in the city. Um, it includes transmission mains, new water connections, this metering infrastructure, seismically resilient storage, meaning that, you know, storage on and the reservoirs and things are being reinforced so that in the event of an earthquake, you don't have liquefaction or something that's going to compromise the integrity of those structures. Uh, and it's designed to ensure that there's a consistent water supply in the event of an emergency or disaster. Uh, this specific location was ideal for city because of the defense perimeter. Uh, it was pretty, it could be pretty well screened um, from the residential areas that were immediately around it. Um, and the access to the city own, I mean, it's access to the city-owned power and conduit that's already in place in that location. I have with me on the phone, uh, Brandon Anderson, who's a um, civil engineer with H D Fowler Company. And he is the consultant that helped to uh, prepare um, uh, some of the information that is technically required to be submitted when we submit an application to the city for a type three wireless facility. Both Brandon and I are here tonight to answer any questions you might um, have. We've read the uh, staff report and uh, had, talked it over with Public Works. Um, and uh, we appreciate staff recommending approval. We hope that you approve the uh, decision and we will accept the conditions of approval as is.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant with regard to the proposed application? Commissioner Adams?
Thanks, Sheriff McCann. Uh, I have a question. Is the plan to paint the pole or leave it in its natural state? I know that it was mentioned that it was a wood pole.
Uh, we, we pull this wood pole, but we will end up having to paint the antenna to look like the wood pole, although it's going to be a probably a flat brown or black or something like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we are now at the public testimony portion for this agenda item. We will call for testimony in groups, starting with those in favor of the application, then those in opposition to the application, and then those neither in favor nor in opposition. As a reminder, testimony is limited to the criteria that apply to the application. So now is time for testimony in favor of the application. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Not seeing any. Uh, we will move on to those who uh, wish to speak in opposition to the application. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Uh, for those view, I should say, for those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature on your Zoom menu bar. Or if calling, press star nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. And it looks like we have no one wishing to speak in uh, opposition. So do we have anyone who wishes to speak in favor or neither in favor nor in opposition? And it doesn't look like it. It looks like we have a quiet group tonight. So um, since there was no public testimony, I think that means that we don't have any uh, need for uh, applicants rebuttal, so we can move on to the final staff comments. Does staff have any final comments?
No final comments, but it, it does look like someone's hand is raised now.
They are? Oh, okay. Well, then we shall see who that person is. So um, I will, uh, the commission calls on um, the person whose phone number appears to be nine seven one two four six zero two two three. I'm sorry, you don't have a name uh, associated with your number right now. Um, please state your name and address for the record. Looks like they may be muted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay. My name is Troy Pearson. I'm with the Beaverton Water Department. And uh, one clarifying thing that I'd like to add to this meeting. Um, there was uh, talk about painting the antenna uh, a brown color to try to blend in with the pole. And from the emails that I have seen, that could interrupt with the frequency and the effectiveness of the, the wireless antenna. So I just wanted to state the record in front of everybody that I recommend that we leave the actual antenna in its natural state and not put any coatings over it, so it has the best effective uh, range that it can.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the speaker? It does not look like it. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak on this application? Okay. Um, shall we do the rebuttal?
Yes, Chair, this is highly irregular since the testimony was
slightly out of sync.
Technically, but uh, because it is different from the presentation, uh, I'd like to hear, can we hear from the applicant? Uh, for applicant rebuttal, please.
Absolutely. So now is the time for the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant's rebuttal is limited to five minutes. Please keep comments focused on issues raised during the public testimony portion, and please do not provide any new evidence.
Uh, I would say that um, we actually did uh, um, originally have, and I uh, thought to challenge that condition of approval, but we're informed by, or the, the staff was informed by the city attorney that that could not be um, um, changed. And so, yeah, after speaking with the client, we withdrew the challenge to that um, condition of approval. And uh, the, the thing about it is, is what happens when you paint that is it may not stick and it compromises, it may compromise the um, warranty, of the manufacturer's warranty. Um, but if that's the law and that's the way it reads, then we're just going to have to live with it and that's what we've decided.
Okay.
I, I will say also, I just wanted to, I forgot to say this. We had our neighborhood meeting back in December and I'm not sure if they submitted an actual letter, but they did vote to um, submit a letter in favor of the proposed uh, tower after we went through the neighborhood meeting. And so they were in support of it. So this was also shared with the neighborhood. It's not something that people around the area would not expect.
Thank you very much. Do commissioners have any questions of the applicant? It does not appear so. Thank you very much. All right. Now, does staff have any final comments?
Uh, yeah. I just wanted to say that the letter from the um, neighbor Southwest NAC was included as part of the applicant's middle exhibits. Um, I don't remember the exact name of the exhibit or what number it is in the order, but it is part of what's listed there on Granicus, or if you're looking at our uh, proposed development projects page, it's there. And that's the only additional comment that I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With the final comments completed, I will close the public hearing. So now is the time for deliberation and as is standard procedure, I will randomly call in commissioners for discussion of the application. Um, Commissioner Adams?
I, I, I like what I've heard tonight and it looks like they're in compliance with staff's findings, so I'm good.
Uh, Commissioner Winter?
I think it's a fine application, Mr.
Yeah. Commissioner Speck?
Um, I think everything looks good.
Thank you. Commissioner Mettler?
The application looks good to me.
Commissioner McAvoy?
Uh, same. Everything looks in order. No concerns.
All right. And I didn't have any concerns either. So is there a motion to, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass.
There is specific language we must say.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Commissioner Winter?
Uh, well, I don't have it up, so bear with me while I dig it out.
Thought you had it memorized by now.
Uh, it's the numbers. I move to approve LU three two zero two four dash zero one one six seven Loon Drive ASR three wireless facility based on the facts and findings of the staff report dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And with a supplemental in tonight.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Adams, seconds. Is there any discussion? No? All right. A vote will be taken by roll call. When your name is called, please say yea or nay. Uh, Commissioner McAvoy?
Yay.
Commissioner Mettler? Can you say that again? I could not hear you. There we go. Commissioner Speck?
Yay.
Commissioner Winter?
I.
Commissioner Adams?
Yeah.
And I vote I as well. Motion passes unanimously. The planning commission's decision will be memorialized in land use orders that will be provided to all parties that provided oral and written testimony. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal in accordance with the applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code and the rules of the Land Use Board of Appeals. So next up, we have training. Planning Commissioner, Planning Division Manager Anas Latinsky will now provide training on Oregon land use law history and recent changes.
Thank you. I'm going to hopefully successfully launch my slide presentation here. Thank you for your patience. All right. I'm going to try this one more time. All right. I believe we have our presentation launched.
Yes.
Great. So um, this is a, this is a presentation that covers a technical but really important topic, which is Oregon's um, pretty unique statewide uh, land use and planning system. Um, so I'm going to go over a bunch of history, um, cover some crucial pieces of um, state policy and law regarding land use in the state. And then talk a little bit about some of the more recent updates to state requirements for land use. And then we'll have some time at the end to um, to ask questions and do discussion. And this is all related to me being able to advance my presentation. Apologies, guys. My normal stuff is not really working quite right. Here we go. Okay. Slide two, achievement unlocked. So the specific topics that I'll be covering include um, just an overview of the Oregon Planning Growth Management Approach. Talk a little bit about the different entities that govern different aspects of planning policy in Beaverton. Some of the specific policy mandates, not in a lot of detail that Beaverton is obligated to do, to cover. Um, and then some of the procedural mandates that have a bearing on the land use process and affect the land use applications that the planning commission reviews in the course of its duties. Uh, and then we'll talk finally about those more recent state mandates that affect how all of this happens. So going uh, in the Wayback Machine, the nineteen seventies in Oregon um, really was interestingly representative of some things that were happening at the national level. At the national level, we saw a lot of really important environmental legislation become adopted. Um, that things like um, legislation governing clean air and water, requirements from environmental review. At the state level in Oregon, um, we saw Governor Tom McCall really act um, in a way that was um, pretty remarkable uh, to establish Oregon's growth management system. Senate bills one hundred and one oh one, it's nice round numbers, which are easy to remember. Um, really kind of laid the groundwork for these policies. And they created statewide framework for land use planning that applied to the entire state and had requirements for cities and for counties, requirements for comprehensive planning, and ultimately led to the adoption of fourteen statewide planning goals. This is really a reaction, not just to the kind of zeitgeist around environmental awareness um, that was um, really at play nationwide. Um, but also um, really looking at the way that um, growth and development was happening in the state. This is of course, um, in the, you know, at a time period where there had been such significant expansion post-World War Two. We saw suburban development really um, uh, occur so strongly across the country, including in Oregon. And there was a recognition that that pattern of development in this sprawl was having an impact on the environment in the state. So the, the whole land use system in Oregon really was born out of a recognition that the way development was happening was not consistent with what people in the state wanted to see happening. So this is the wonky part. I'll go through it really quickly, but um, in Oregon, the Oregon revised statutes is the actual laws that are adopted by the legislature. Um, and here are some of the specific references that um, that pertain to land use. Don't feel like you have to memorize these. We don't expect anyone to go reading legislation. There are a lot of different parts of that ORS that have a bearing on how cities conduct um, planning, um, and how we review um, development through the land use process. So there's a reason that we have Assistant City Attorney Robin helping us at the planning commission meetings. She also helps staff on a really regular basis when we're working to navigate the different requirements um, that uh, we have to follow when it comes to reviewing land use applications. It can get, it can get pretty wonky and pretty complicated. Oregon administrative rules um, is really the um, the kind of the practical and more detailed guidance that state agencies create um, in order to help um, help, help implement um, those Oregon revised statutes. So most of the um, OARs that govern the land use process are um, are under the purview of of the Land Conservation Development Commission, which is the decision-making body, and the Department of Land Conservation Development, which is the state agency that deals with many land use issues. There are other entities of the state that we interact with, um, but DLCD, you'll hear that acronym, is one of the main ones. This is a nice little diagram that kind of shows the relationship between the state law and the way that we actually implement regulations and procedures for development, um, in Beaverton. So we have, um, we have the Oregon Revised Statutes, we have the Oregon Administrative Rules. The statewide planning goals are actually, um, adopted in ORS, but they're, they're detailed in, um, in OAR. And those together really tell each city, um, what the requirements are for comprehensive plans. A lot of the substance is specific to the local jurisdiction, but there's, there's a lot of, a lot of it comes down, kind of cascades through the different levels of, um, state, um, and also regional requirements in the form of metro requirements, which we'll talk about a little bit later, that go down to the comprehensive plans. In Beaverton, like in other cities, the comprehensive plan is a policy document, but it also has a bit of a regulatory force. Things like the Transportation System Plan that the city is in the process of updating actually live as part of the comprehensive plan. And ultimately, the city, um, zoning rules in the form of the Beaverton Development Code are a separate regulatory document that directly governs how we review land use applications and what is permitted in terms of land use and development in the city. And that is, needs to be consistent with comprehensive plans, with Metro Code, with OAR and ORS, and when we make changes to those regulations in the Development Code, we actually have to make findings about consistency with those other bodies of policy. So here is a rundown of those statewide planning goals. The ones that are in the darker colors, um, do apply, hmm, sometimes to Beaverton. And then the lighter colors are those that just don't apply to land within the city. Staff works with, um, uh, a variety of the goals. We especially deal with, um, Goal 10 in Housing, there's been a lot of attention to housing in recent years. Goal 2 obviously directly addresses land use planning. Goal 1, that is for citizen involvement, um, is kind of the, the foundation under a lot of the public notice requirements in the land use process, um, but it doesn't necessarily spell out exactly what those need to be. Um, and then we also have Goal 5, which addresses this kind of mix of different, um, different policy areas, natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. So when you're reading something like the, um, the staff report for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan, you'll see that there's a lot of discussion of these planning goals and how the proposal is consistent with those applicable goals. Um, going back to that regional framework, this is, I, I'm apologize, this map is actually pretty small, and it only covers a part of the region, but I tried to kind of put Beaverton mostly in the center. This is Metro's map, it's not necessarily the most current map, but it is, um, it is a map that shows the metro designated, um, regional centers, corridors, town centers, et cetera, there are those different colored blobs. And those are actually designations that are part of, um, part of metro regulatory documents. So Metro is a regional government. It's unique in that it is an elected regional government. It covers the urbanized areas of Washington, Clackamas, and Multnomah Counties. Um, and Metro has significant roles in, um, solid waste. Metro runs the zoo, um, and also Metro has a role in land use and transportation. So those regional relationships, um, are important in term, in a kind of collaborative sense in terms of policymaking, but Metro also has a kind of oversight, policy, and regulatory role. And when the city makes changes to the Development Code or the comprehensive plan, we again need to make findings with, of consistency with these Metro documents. We'll also talk about Metro's role in the urban growth boundary process a little bit later. But moving on to Washington County, um, I always find it interesting to see a map of the county because it seems so large, even just thinking about the urbanized parts of it. But in this, on the slide, you can see that Beaverton, Tigard, and Hillsborough really just are in that eastern part of Washington County, with the majority of the county being quite rural. The role of the county, of course, um, is not the same as the role of cities. Counties have particular focus on the kinds of services that they deliver, with a highlight on transportation. Housing and Public Health Human Services are an important part of a county's duties, um, and there's a lot of coordination, um, around these areas. But Washington County also has a lot of urbanized areas that are not a part of incorporated cities. And so Beaverton's interesting and complicated boundaries reflect the fact that a lot of Washington County developed, um, and was developed to an urban level without being inside the city, which is a fairly unique condition in the state. And the county and the city obviously coordinate on a number of things. Transportation becomes really important when it comes to land use because county, um, county roads actually travel through the city of Beaverton. The county retains jurisdiction over many arterial roadways in the city. So there needs to be that close coordination when there's development proposed. And we have a number of documents that memorialize the coordination that needs to happen between the county and the city. One of the important ones being the Urban Planning Area Agreement, which was last updated in 2018. So special districts are another pretty interesting topic. Beaverton has, um, a separate Parks and Recreation District. The acronym THPRD is one of the, um, uh, least graceful acronyms that we have, but they're, you know, they're, acronyms are acronyms, they can be a little bit funky. We have fire, um, services provided by Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, TVFNR. Clean Water Services is a county-wide sewer and stormwater service provider for urbanized Washington County. So we do also work closely with Clean Water Services, although the city does take on the role of sewer and stormwater provider, um, within the city for certain aspects of the infrastructure. So, um, it gets down to specific technical details, like what side, what's the diameter of the pipe? And we have, as you can imagine, very, um, detailed agreements with Clean Water Services that spell out the coordination and responsibility for building and maintaining infrastructure and providing these really crucial services to the city, while also protecting the environment, which is a big part of what Clean Water Services does. We have, of course, also the Beaverton School District that covers a much larger area than the city of Beaverton does. It's one of the things that leads to confusion about whether people are within the city of Beaverton or not. They say, "My address says Beaverton, my kids go to Beaverton schools, what do you mean I'm not in the city?" But those two things could be true, um, but it may still be true that you are located outside the city's jurisdictional boundaries. And then again, a very interesting, there are actually four different water districts that serve the city. Uh, the city of Beaverton's water service serves, um, I think I'm gonna get this right, I might have it backwards. The majority of the population of Beaver, Beaverton, but not necessarily the majority of the area. Again, I might have that backwards. We also have, um, the Twelton Valley Water District, which serves a pretty significant part of the city. And then two quite small, I would say, legacy water districts, West Slope and Raleigh Water Districts that serve quite small areas on the western side of the city. So when land use applications come through, new development is proposed, having the service available is really important. So when it comes to water service, that water service might be provided by any one of those, one of those four service providers. Okay, so going back to the urban growth boundary, and this is really, um, one of those fundamental outcomes from the, um, the planning system that was set up beginning in the 1970s. Urban Growth Boundary is a geographic area that cities and counties are required to have, that contains enough land to accommodate 20 years of land needed for housing and for employment. And in Metro, there is actually one urban growth boundary that Metro is responsible for that captures the, um, that area for all of the cities within Metro. So obviously, it's not just one city, the cities are next to each other, and so it's Metro that actually does that coordination for the urban growth boundary. This is, um, a structured process to periodically evaluate whether there is enough land within those urban growth boundaries. And the approach to considering expansions of the urban growth boundaries have changed, um, in the relatively recent, recent past. Originally, um, the decision-making criteria about whether or not to expand that urban growth boundary really was focused on, um, protecting farmland. And so they actually looked at the viability of the soil and the suitability of land for farming as a, a priority consideration for where those urban growth boundary expansions could be located. And so there was an update, um, that actually shifted and took a different approach. And there was a lot of complexity to this, it was a very controversial political process, um, which we do not have time to go into right now. But what it ended up with is establishing urban reserves and rural reserves outside the urban growth boundary, um, it, in the metro area, that basically said, "Well, these areas are not yet within the urban growth boundary, but the urban reserves are areas for future growth within the next 40 to 50 years." Meanwhile, the rural reserves are protected from urbanization for that 50-year time period. So it was intended to create some greater degree of predictability that looked at a longer timeframe, um, in order to, again, kind of promote a more coordinated and thoughtful approach to urbanization, um, in the metro region specifically. Now, fast-forwarding a little bit, um, many commission, commissioners were on, well, some commissioners were on the commission, um, when the Cooper Mountain Community Plan was adopted just this last, just this last year. That was the result, um, of an urban growth boundary expansion that the city proposed back in, um, back in 2018. The community, the Cooper Mountain Community Plan was actually conducted after Metro made the decision to add this Cooper area to the urban growth boundary, um, which then triggered the requirement to create the detailed community plan that, um, that really, really dug into how to urbanize in a thoughtful way to provide the infrastructure, the service, to make sure that housing was provided. And the city council, together with the Planning Commission and other community stakeholders, created a set of goals to, to work towards as that Cooper Mountain Community Plan was, was created. So this kind of puzzle piece-shaped area here that's shown in white, that's the Cooper Mountain Urban Reserve, but which then became the Cooper Mountain Planning Area. It is currently within the urban growth boundary, but it is not yet part of the city of Beaverton. Now that the community plan has been completed, we are starting to have conversations with property owners that are interested in annexing their property to the city so that it can be developed pursuant to that plan. Um, and here again, sorry, I guess I should have switched sides earlier. Here's a bit of a zoom in on that Cooper Mountain area. And, um, and just again, we're, we're, um, we're really thrilled with, um, with the outcome of that plan. It's a really, um, really nicely considered approach to providing a lot of new housing, but that also provides a lot of protection for natural areas and a thoughtful approach to providing infrastructure service. And, uh, so far, um, we are still in a slightly different planning mode. But in the coming years, we do expect there to be applications that come to Planning Commission for development of this area. So back to that kind of, uh, what is the state framework for, um, for land use and planning? In a nutshell, really what Beaverton and other cities are obligated to do is adopt and maintain a comprehensive plan that is consistent with these statewide planning goals and other Oregon law, and then regulate land use, review these land use applications for development in a way that's consistent with those Oregon Revised Statutes and, um, and Oregon Administrative Rules. There's a lot under the lid there, um, a lot of complexity. I'm not going to get into it in too detail, just kind of touching on it really briefly for, for a moment now. And we will get to some of those, uh, relatively recent new rules in a minute. But I also wanted to touch on some of those procedural requirements for the land use decision process, which are relevant to some of the applications that Planning Commission reviews. So these procedural requirements have actually been incorporated into the Beaverton Development Code. Our local code needs to be consistent with state law, um, but it need not be consistent in every detail. Sometimes state law kind of sets minimums for things. However, some state law does also require us to prescribe a process that is identical to what is laid out in state law, so that, that will vary a little bit. But there are some general, um, general features, um, that are helpful to be aware of. One of them is that there are specific timeframes for reviewing land use applications. And this is for a couple of reasons, it's for the transparency overall of the city's decision-making process. It's for the predictability of the developers and property owners who, uh, wish to develop their property and want to know how these decisions will be made. And it's for the understanding of the community to know how, again, how these decisions are being made by the city, what are the criteria that are, that those decisions are based on, and what are the opportunities to be involved in the process? So from the timeframes for review, we go down to public notice. This does vary based on the type of application. So some applications that require a large amount of discretion will, um, there will be notice provided to a broader area. Obviously, the, um, the applications that are reviewed by Planning Commission, um, include a public hearing. So people can comment, testify, um, verbally, um, in support or opposition, or just with comments about an application. But for some other, um, procedure types that do not include a public hearing, there's still opportunities to provide comments in writing before a decision is made. Again, these procedure types are largely determined by state law. And there are, again, a lot of, a lot of details, um, under the, under the heading here. But the use of discretion is one of the important characteristics of a particular decision that do shape, um, what type of review, um, is required. And then there are appeals. There are appeals of land use decisions that can be exercised by applicants when their, uh, when their application is denied. Appeals can also be, be filed, um, by others who wish to, um, oppose an application's approval. Um, and there is appeal both, um, within the city, a local appeal, where a staff decision could be appealed for consideration by Planning Commission. A Planning Commission decision could be appealed to city council for consideration. And then once the local appeals are exhausted, the Land Use Board of Appeals is a statewide land use appeals body, um, whose sole purpose is to review land use appeals. I think the appeals process is, um, a really important characteristic of Oregon land use because it provides that recourse for participants in the system. And then getting around to more recent, um, state planning mandates. The years here on this slide actually refer specifically to the legislative sessions. Oregon has a kind of two-year rhythm to the state legislative, um, sessions. There's a short session and a long session. The long session, um, is intended for significant policymaking, and it lasts approximately six months. The short session is closer to six weeks, um, and is intended mainly to address budget adjustments. However, other business can be conducted during the short, short session. And as you can see, um, there are, there are some, um, some, uh, some mandates on here that align with short session rather than long session dates. So just going back to 2017, a lot of these planning mandates you'll see are, um, are focused on housing. Housing production has been a really important concern and priority, um, for the legislature as well as for other levels of government. In 2017, we saw, and by the way, this is not a comprehensive list of every piece of legislation that affects planning. There's way more than this, but these are some of the biggies, um, and it made sense to call attention to them. Legislation in 2017 required that accessory dwelling units, um, be, be permitted by cities and counties across the state. This was something that Beaverton already did, um, but as you'll see, the theme continues. This is something that then became a requirement in state law. So state law created definitions for accessory dwelling units and then specified exactly how, um, how they need to be, um, reviewed and approved by cities. 2019 was a really big piece of legislation, um, particularly as it relates to middle housing. There was, it's, um, uh, known as HB, uh, 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 gosh, HB 2001, is that right? HB 2001, it's a bit confusing because It's a bit confusing because there was another year, there was a bill that had the same title, but it was actually in 2019. And this was really important, but also awkward for Beaverton because we were actually already in the middle of a middle housing project. So we had gotten partway down the road of planning to update our codes in order to accommodate middle housing, but then the state legislation drops, and it's not the same as what we were working on. So we actually had to pause our project and wait for the rulemaking with DLCD to proceed before continuing our project because we knew that it would not make sense for us to adopt middle housing legislation and make changes to the development code and then have to go back and do it all over again differently. But it led to a very interesting implementation timeframe because of that funny timing. There was also the requirement there to create housing production strategies, and Beaverton actually adopted its housing production strategy in 2023. Moving on to 2020, this is not legislation, but it's an executive order. This is the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Executive Order. It addressed many things. It's very broad, but it particularly had implications for parking regulation, transportation planning, in what are deemed climate-friendly areas, which are basically areas that are well-served by transit. Going forward to 2021, there were some requirements around affordable housing permitting, and this goes back to the timeframes for application review. There's that 120 days for making a decision on a land use application after it's complete. For affordable housing, that's 100 days. So the state basically said, "Affordable housing is really important, so cities, counties, you need to make those decisions on those permits faster." Interestingly, the other requirements for the amount of time that proposals needed to be, what notice needed to be sent, notice needed to be provided to the surrounding area, that didn't change. Some of the other requirements didn't change, so it just kind of had an effect of squishing the process in a way that's potentially a little bit awkward. But nonetheless, we have made it work. In 2023, we have some additional requirements that are adopted for the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, looking at housing needs on a statewide basis. 2024 was a short session, but we did see some significant housing legislation in a bill sponsored by the governor, House Bill 1537. This created kind of a whole variety of new options for developers to pursue and also created the Housing Accountability and Production Office, which is a new state office that has the ability to receive complaints about how cities are processing land use applications and kind of research them and work to bring cities into compliance with state law. So that will be interesting. It isn't quite up and running yet, but it will be an interesting addition to the Oregon land use system when it comes to processing housing applications. I don't know that I should be getting into the details of HB 1537. I will note that it does have an impact on which land use application the Planning Commission will review. That second bullet there, limited land use decisions, that is a procedure type under state law that prescribes a specific process and does not include public hearings. And the definition of what limited land use decisions encompass was changed with this legislation. And what it essentially has led to is a number of land use applications that were previously reviewed by Planning Commission are now only permitted to be staff-level decisions under state law. So going forward, there will be a number of development types that would have otherwise come to Planning Commission that will no longer be coming to Planning Commission for a decision. Anything that is related to conditional use will still come to Planning Commission. There will still be plenty of business for you to do, but this change was imposed, in my opinion, slightly awkwardly by the state, and it does actually have a direct effect on what that procedure is for a number of different land use applications. Mandatory adjustments, addresses, some, basically flexibility for development and design standards that are mandatory. Cities are required to grant them, and so it takes some of the autonomy away from cities in terms of setting those standards, and we are in the process of implementing those now. So we'll have more updates on that later. The option for the developer to opt into new standards, this is something that's actually a little more intuitive, in my opinion. It basically gives developers an opportunity to request that newly adopted standards be applied to their applications, even if their applications were filed prior to those new standards being formally adopted. So an example would be, take the parking, there were some big parking changes. If a development application, land use application was filed prior to parking requirements being reduced, an applicant would be able to request that they can then apply those reduced requirements for parking, even though their original application preceded that becoming the regulation. So, and here we are in 2025. There is, it is a long legislative session this year. It is in progress, but it's almost over. The legislative session must end by the end of June. And there is legislation that is being considered, which will have an effect on the land use process, specifically addressing housing, but not only housing. And so at this point, we will have to kind of, we're kind of waiting and watching, and once the legislative session is over, we will be sitting down as staff and kind of evaluating where things ended up and what we need to do to implement whatever new rules end up being adopted. The Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, this was that executive order from 2020, CFAC for short, another terrible acronym. This is, again, as I mentioned earlier, it's a pretty sprawling piece of legislation. This is what prompted the city to remove off-street parking requirements. It is having a big impact on the way that the Transportation System Plan Project is approaching updating that important document for the city. And the rules for climate-friendly areas are prompting us to just really kind of make some refinements to those denser mixed-use areas. And the project that's implementing many of those, which Planning Commission has seen, is the Designing Walkable Places Project. It's come to Planning Commission for work sessions in the past, and it's actually coming again on June 11th for another work session. So stay tuned. There is more on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Executive Order Implementation coming to a Planning Commission meeting near you soon. And I guess I already kind of talked through these things. My apologies, I spoke to the earlier slide instead, but I think I covered all of these things already. These are further resources, and we'll make sure to distribute this presentation because I realize these are all links and you can't necessarily click them on your screen right now, but this is where you can find more information about the Oregon land use system, some of it from a historical perspective. I would particularly recommend Oregon Public Broadcasting's Growing Oregon Series. It's a great and engaging history of how, kind of, the motivations and process of adopting these pretty unique statewide planning frameworks. So it's a really good listen, and you can find it at OPB. And that is it for now. And I realize I just yammered at you for a long time, so I hope that people have questions or comments, but have at it.
Thank you, Anna. Looks like we have questions. Commissioner Adam.
Thank you, Sharon McCann. Anna, so my question is, does the city have a set timeline or expectation for annexation in the city? And if so, what does that look like?
Are you talking specifically about the Cooper Mountain area?
I wasn't trying to mention Cooper Mountain, but that did come to mind.
Yeah, yeah. That's a very understandable question. So right now, we are really concentrating on working with property owners that are interested in moving forward with development. And that represents a not insignificant part of the area. It's important to recognize that before any new housing is built and any new properties are developed, there's actually a fair amount of infrastructure that needs to be available in order to support that. So there are a few capital projects that need to be in place before that development can really occur. There's a pump station at the top of the mountain that is currently under construction. The city got a grant to build it. That is going to be what helps unlock development in the more northern part of the area. There's also a sewer pump station, which is in the more of the southwestern part. That is a CWS facility. That is going to need to be completed in order for a significant portion to be developed. But the annexation process can actually go forwards before that infrastructure is totally ready because properties need to be fully annexed to the city before they can file land use applications and kind of get into that, figuring out exactly what their plans are. They need to then build roads. They need to build those pipes and infrastructure. Also, areas that annex need to actually be adjacent to current city boundaries. And so there are some properties that are actually, they're not touching the city boundary, and they're not on a road, so they actually have to kind of wait for their neighbors in order to be eligible to annex at all. So I hope that addresses your question. We are working on some annexation guides for property owners that are interested in annexation. There was an updated annexation ordinance that was adopted at council this spring that helps kind of lay a foundation for how annexations will be considered by council. But that infrastructure availability is a really important part of that annexation process. We want to make sure that the city is able to coordinate development smoothly across that whole area when it happens, and the way that annexation occurs has a bearing on that infrastructure provision.
Okay, and it sounds like the annexation occurs property by property, is that right? Or can it happen in a large segment of the properties in the area?
Well, annexation is governed by state law. It's one of the other things that's governed by state law. And there are limited methods for annexation under state law, most of which require the consent of the property owner. So there are really only quite limited circumstances where the city could annex a larger area or annex multiple properties without the owners of those properties actually saying, "Hey, city, we want you to annex our property."
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Commissioner McAvoy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Thanks for that presentation, Anna. That was great. Really appreciated that history. I just wanted to clarify, for the limited decisions you mentioned that come out of HB 1537, I wasn't clear, are those in effect now, or is there a rulemaking process that's still ongoing? And if so, any sense of what that timeline is?
Yeah, oh, it's in effect now. It actually took effect at the beginning of this year, and it's one of those things where we've been working to put in place an approach to identifying what has to change in terms of Beaverton's processes. There is some complexity to it. The limited land use decision process is one in Beaverton that is implemented through what we call a Type II process, which is a staff-level decision where there's no hearing, it doesn't go to Planning Commission, but there is notice provided to surrounding property owners. However, the city's Type II process actually calls for notice to a slightly larger radius than the limited land use decision calls for in state law. So the new requirement to adhere only to the limited land use decision process in state law means that we've had to kind of do some comparison of the way that our Type II process aligns with the limited land use decision process or does not, and then clarify exactly which applications it applies to and does not. So we have kind of a crosswalk. The other thing, and for our new commissioners, I can't remember if we talked about this when we did our orientation last week, but we do bundle applications together in Beaverton. It's really common for development to actually need multiple land use approvals in order to proceed, and so having them follow different processes often makes things very difficult. And so we have basically written a memo that explains when bundling would still be really strongly recommended by staff. And so we do encourage applicants who have a limited land use decision, but also applications that follow different processes, to voluntarily opt to bundle those applications together. That doesn't mean that they would necessarily come to Planning Commission. Sometimes it would just mean they follow a standard Type II process, but in some cases it will mean that applications that would fall under that limited land use decision process under state law would still be bundled with applications that all go to Planning Commission for review concurrently.
Got it, okay. Thanks.
All right, are there any other questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much, Anna. That was great.
You're very welcome. And if you have questions that occurred to you tonight or over the next week or whatever, don't hesitate to reach out and ask me about them. I'm happy to provide more information about any of the topics that we covered tonight, and of course, anything else, too.
All right, fantastic. All right, that is the end of our agenda, so we are now adjourned at 7:50 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks so much, everybody. Have a good night.